Good evening. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for May 16, 2023. If you could all please rise and join me in the flags loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kim, could you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Core?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michaud?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas? Councilmember Troutner?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Item number three on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Any changes? Pat?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We need to add an excused absence for Councilmember Thomas as item 8J.
All right. Any other changes? Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda with the addition of item J on the consent calendar.
So move.
Okay.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. That brings us down to the best part of the agenda, where we get to celebrate and talk about some of the good things that are going on in our community. The first two items we have this evening are proclamations. First proclamation I have is a proclamation for National Police Week. So I am going to read the proclamation and then ask the chief to come up and accept this and then say a few words. Whereas, Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and a week in which, and the week in which May 15 falls, is National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Kent Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Kent, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police officers, and that members of our department recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Kent Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, work to create a safer community for all while strengthening trust and building genuine relationships. And whereas National Police Week is our time to remember all officers who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities. And while Police Week has always been important to us, it has taken on an even deeper importance in our community after we lost Detective Foof in 2017 and Officer Moreno in 2018. Now therefore I, Mayor Dana Ralph, call upon all citizens of Kent and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 15 through, through May 21, 2023, as National Police Week and to join me in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Please join me in recognizing and paying respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you for that wonderful proclamation. It's always kind of an emotional time of year for law enforcement. Mayor, you mentioned two of our, our officers who died in light of duty. We also had Marshal Miller.
That's right.
Back in the day before we were Incorporated City. He died trying to stop bank robbers, armed bank robbers, by himself. And so, yeah, it's a, it's a, it is a time to reflect and remember those that have fallen. Honor their duty and their sacrifice. Uplift their families because they continue on without them. It's also a call, I think, for all of us to look at how we are doing this job. And the question I always contemplate this time of year is, are we doing the job in a way that honors their sacrifice? Are we upholding those values and principles that made it worth their sacrifice going forward? And so that is that challenge that gets renewed every time of this year. It is also an opportunity to celebrate those who have served and continue to serve today. And we do want to celebrate that. Law enforcement is not an easy career path at all. But 31 years plus now, I'd go back and do it all over again. The question in this job is, will you face adversity? Yes. Are there traumas you're going to see and difficulties and stress? Yes. But that sacrifice, commitment, and dedication is well worth it because everybody here is depending on us, right? And the question I use to kind of renew myself every year, this time of year, is if not us, then who? And if there is no us, then what? And so that gets me out of bed every day. Gets me in this, gets me here. And it gets our wonderful women and men who serve throughout the department in all our divisions, including our support services, who without them, we could not accomplish the mission. So very appreciative of the proclamation and very glad that we could recognize our officers this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I very much appreciate that statement and I'm grateful for all of our officers that chose to be the who so we don't have to contemplate the what. We, we should all be very, very proud of our police department and the work that they do to take care of our families every single day. Pat, did you have something? All right. The next proclamation that we have is for a different set of our employees who are also often called out in the middle of the night on weekends and holidays. And this is for, for next week. Chad Baron, our Public Works Director, will come up and accept this. I will go ahead and read the proclamation for National Public Works Week. Whereas the city of Kent recognizes that the men and women in Kent who provide and maintain public works, infrastructure, facilities, and services are of vital importance to sustainable communities and to the health, safety, and well-being of the people. And whereas such facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees from state and local government and the private sector who are responsible for and who plan, design, build, operate, and maintain the transportation, water, wastewater, drainage, infrastructure, and facilities, and who deliver solid waste services, transit, and fleet services which are essential to serving our residents. And whereas it is in the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain an interest in and understanding of the importance of public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of the city of Kent, do hereby proclaim May 21 through 27, 2023, to be National Public Works Week and urge all of our residents to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they have made to our national health, safety, welfare, and quality of life.
Thanks for that, Mayor. I'm glad to be part of a team that we like to say around the office. When things are going well, nobody knows we're here. So, and as you mentioned, we do have people get up in the middle of the night taking care of all kinds of things. I think in some ways the proclamation spent more time on the professionals and the engineers. I consider a lot of our maintenance folks to be the professionals out there. So I want to highlight them. And I also want to point out for those folks, I know it's kind of graduation time. And one of the things that we'd like to highlight also is the need to get the next round of folks in to public work. So if people are, you know, cousins or aunts and uncles are thinking, what's my kid going to do? Please, 253-856-5500. 253-856-5600, we will find a spot for them. We're always looking for dedicated people. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chad. I, I will, special recognition to our operations crews. When I say that they're out in the middle of the night, you are all sleeping. And the phone rings because something's going on with the water system or the police department's called because there's a giant hole in the road or you name it. They are out there, get up, take care of that stuff for us. And then by the time we all wake up, we get to take a shower and go to work. So really, really grateful for, for that dedication. And I will also tell you on the professional side, a lot of those folks are working in the middle of the night as well because I check my email in the middle of the night and I'm like, hmm, why is that person still working? It's the dedication to making sure that the city runs smoothly. Without our public works department, I don't know where we'd be. We certainly wouldn't be able to go about our daily lives and maintain and function as a community. So very, very grateful for them. Bless you.
Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on. Next item on the agenda is community events. I'm going to start, Council President, with Go Birds.
Yes, Go Bird, they're playing extremely well. So they got games scheduled May 16, 17, and 19. I'm talking about Kent Thunderbirds. So please get a chance to go to Showware Center and visit them. June 30, the Kent National Festival. This, I want to say, this is 17th year, give and take. It's been around quite some time. So really a great fun event. So if you get a chance, please stop by. It's going to be a nice day. It's already getting nice outside. So please get a chance to go visit at the Showware Center. On June 9, 11, they got Jurassic World Live Tour. So I got four grandkids begging for some tickets. So I'm sure I will be there as well. July 8, we have the Wolf Throwdown with Tim McGraw. You know Tim McGraw?
I do.
Okay.
I mean, not like a person. Yes. May have already bought my tickets.
All right. Well, that's going on also. The ticket's going quick. So if you haven't got the ticket, you probably want to get moving on pretty quick. Then July 21st, we got the Indian Mega Intense Tour. And then September 8, we have Gerardo Ortiz. So lots of things going on at the Showware Center. So you get a chance to go and visit. And also the Thunderbird, definitely using your turn of mind. So go Thunderbirds.
Yeah. Western Conference Champions.
Yes.
They are now, series is tied 2-2. Tonight is game number three. We have a chance of wrapping it up. So wish them good luck. They are playing, they're playing amazingly.
Yes, great, great.
Councilmember Fincher, did you have your?
I think like councilmembers, she's going to go first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Fincher. This Saturday at 10:30, we are celebrating the grand opening of Kresson Park, which is our new renovated park downtown Kent that has a lunar rover replica and some other cool space stuff. So this Saturday at 10:30.
Thanks. All right, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This Friday, we have a mini recycling event. It's going to be up at Kent Methodist Church and that's going to be 9 to noon. And then on Saturday, the 20th, along with the opening of the park, there's also a bicycle rodeo. And that bicycle rodeo is going to be up at the Kent Y. They're going to have the opportunity, these are children, are going to have the opportunity to ride their bikes, pick up special skills from some of our bike officers. And also there'll be a chance for them to get bicycle helmets. So that is that. Thank you.
All right. Any other community events? Okay. One other just of note, we've got our old fishing, or at the, the fishing hole, we've got our kids' fishing derby. You need to register, pre-register for that, but it's a lot of fun, Council. If you haven't been down and watched the kids fish to watch those, especially the little guys, catch that first fish and then, you know, figure out what to do with it. It's a lot of fun. One of my favorite events every single year. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our public safety report and Chief Padilla will be joining us.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city councils. My pleasure to bring you the May Public Safety Report. And we'll jump right into it there. We want to start with the swearing in ceremony. If I could call up Police Officer Christina Allen to the front, please. We talked about this, all by yourself, standing out in the middle. So, all right. So Tina, as she likes to go by, is one of our newest officers, recently graduated from the academy. Let me give you a little bit about her bio. She was born in Redmond, Washington, is the oldest of four. She lived in five different states but has spent most of her time in Arizona and Washington. Tina grew up playing sports, basketball and soccer, which started at a boys and girls club before she was able to join some of the school teams. She had an opportunity to travel around from an early age, which opened up new doors and life experiences, which she carries with her today and has led to her appreciation of different cultures. She enjoys life with her girlfriend Andrea and her four-year-old, five-pound, silk-haired Yorkie named Leo. Longer title than the name, Leo. Must be very cute. She has a long history of voluntary service. And before coming to Kent, she worked at Verizon. She thought she wanted to climb the corporate ladder until she figured she didn't. So she wanted to do something that was going to be a little more directly impactful in her community. She chose Kent for a few reasons, but one of the big reasons that she had listed here was the people and the department. She has felt very welcomed, open-armed, a big family. She feels supported. And even before being hired and at the academy, she was very pleased that she chose Kent as the place where she's going to start her career. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to introduce Officer Tina Allen.
If you could raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name, Christina Allen, do solemnly swear that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America, the state of Washington and the city of Kent. That I will uphold the Constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Washington. And that I will obey the rules and regulations of the Kent Police Department. Nice work.
Do you have any family you want to introduce?
I do. I have my girlfriend Andrea, my mom, my two sisters, and my little brother Justin Whitlock.
All righty. Next up, more good news. I want to present a couple of lifesaving awards. If I could have Corrections Officer Michael Anderson and Nurse Katie Dean, please come forward. You know the drill. There you go. All right. So they are receiving the lifesaving award for intervening in, in a medical emergency at the jail, saving the life of one of our incarcerated. Let me read what happened and why they were nominated and got the award. Back on March 4th of 2023, Corrections Officer Michael Anderson and Corrections Sergeant Michael Armstrong responded to a cell. They were trying to reach an inmate in the cell who was non-responsive via the intercom system. They found the male inmate barely responsive and lethargic. Sergeant Armstrong went to retrieve the nurse, which is our nurse dean you see before you there. And she quickly recognized that there was a medical emergency and potentially an overdose situation. So she instructed the administration of Narcam, which Officer Anderson provided three doses while Sergeant Armstrong went, called for fire, and awaited fire aid to escort them into the jail, obviously. Fortunately, their efforts combined to result in the inmate surviving. He was revived and treated additionally. So Corrections Officer Anderson and Nurse Dean are being commended for their quick actions as it most certainly contributed to saving the life of the inmate. Both of them embody the Kent Police Department mission of protecting and caring for people in our community and our vision for improving the lives of community members. Before we say congratulations to them, if you're not familiar, we do officer, we do offer some, not a full boat, a full suite of medical services, but it's pretty substantial medical services to our inmates down there. And part of that is several hours a day, several days a week coverage by our nursing staff to assist. In addition with our corrections officers, so when there are these medical emergencies, we get treatment going right away. And so it's a really good team. I'm glad we have that down there. And so you guys have seen Corrections Anderson, Officer Anderson before. It's been a while to swearing in and all that. And he's done very well with us. We appreciate him here. He's testing for sergeant. So good luck on the promotional process there. Ladies and gentlemen, let's congratulate them on their award. All right. Have a couple of plaques. In addition to their plaques, they can add to their trophy room. They get their pin and their medal. I wouldn't recommend wearing the medal everywhere. Just how it's going on. So families in the audience, family, your friends?
Yeah, my parents, my mom Stacy, and then my stepdad Don.
Yeah, I have my wife Ashley, my mom Dawn, and I got my daughter Lily, and my son Lincoln, and then my daughter Evelyn, who is her seventh birthday.
Good job, Katie.
Thank you.
Officer Anderson, good job. Thank you. Hang it on your window.
Yes.
All righty. It's always good. Next up, didn't ask them to come in today because their ceremony was actually back on May 5. But, and we posted on this, there was some media attention to it, but I just want to take a time here to recognize these three officers who receive the state medal of honor. It is the highest honor that a law enforcement officer can achieve in the state. It's very rare that these are awarded, and so this is a really big deal. The purpose behind, if you didn't see the post and the media on it, they were actually nominated by the King County Prosecutor's Office staff. Deputy Prosecutor Albany Burns, who was in charge of the case that was filed in this matter, which was a homicide case, was very moved by what she saw on body worn camera video. And you have to imagine that our prosecutors watch body worn camera video of officer actions every day. And so for this to impact her in such a way says a lot about what happened. says a lot about what happened. She was moved to begin the nomination process. That was completed by King County Prosecutor Lisa Mannion, and then referred the processes that I have to confirm the nomination. And then it went forward and won. And we were there. Mayor, thank you for coming down along with the families and our command staff to see them get their medal. What happened briefly was last year, over a year and a half ago, I guess, there was a shooting at the Central Avenue Pub. Very chaotic scene. We had two different groups who were involved at shooting at each other. And despite the chaotic scene that wasn't under control, our officers moved in to administer lifesaving medical aid to the victim in the parking lot. And they did so at extreme risk. If you watch the video, it is very concerning to watch. And so they put themselves at jeopardy to save a life, to attempt to save a life. And so they were really well-deserving this. So we're very proud of the work they do. All right. Transitioning to some business stuff. Update on our FLOC safety camera installation and going live soon with the operations of this. As you will recall, last year, June 21st, Public Safety Committee meeting, we presented information on that. Commander Josh Baba now has the program. He's been working steadily on this program. And so I wanted to give you an update on where we're at and then kind of a reminder of how these will be used and what they're for. So we approved 20 cameras to be installed in this effort. 12 of the cameras have been installed throughout the city with an additional eight under construction. Thanks to Public Works for all the work in getting permits and everything done. It's been a process, but team effort. As a reminder, the cameras were brought on to increase effectiveness in addressing crime, particularly violent crime, and to help us locate missing adults and vulnerable adults. And this is a program that's pretty well-established throughout the nation, just getting its foothold here in Washington. The way that cameras work is they utilize automatic license plate reader technology, which we've had for years. The cameras photograph the vehicle license plate as they pass through intersections or in front of the cameras that the system then date stamps and time locates the photograph, and they are kept in the system for up to 30 days. If there's no law enforcement purpose for using them, they're expunged. However, if there is a law enforcement purpose, the officer has to justify why before they access the system, and they can get in there and use the system. So how are they used by the officers? The first way is that there are alerts that happen. These systems are tied into both state and national database systems. And so as the plates go through, the query is run on the plates. Say a silver alert. These cameras will pick up and have picked up. You've already listed in silver alert already. Say we, the car goes by and there's a national hit for, say, homicide suspect. These cameras will alert on things of that nature, warrants, lots of different things that are queried in there, and stolen vehicles probably will be the thing that pings hardest on these cameras. When we watched the demo in Yakima, the chief was showing me all the alerts he was getting on his phone, and it was nonstop. So that will be a big part of this as well. So officers in the area will get alerts to their phones, and they'll be able to deal with some of these. Obviously, we probably won't keep up with all the alerts, but we will do our best. So that's a primary way that it gets used. The secondary way is for criminal investigations. And this has happened already here. Say we have a shooting on our East Hill, and a vehicle description is given by a witness at some point to a detective. And let's say they say it's a white car, white sedan, and it was leaving this way. We can go in, check the database, see if that car went through, and that gives us a lead that we can start generating investigation leads. That doesn't mean we've established someone's committed a crime. It just gives us a lead for somebody maybe we need to see if we can locate and have a conversation with. We have already located a shooter in a shooting in Kent here in the last three weeks and made an arrest on the East Hill. And it was because of the system and the way that it was able to help us identify the person involved. We've had several success stories. Identifying a vehicle homicide suspect has occurred on this. We were able to find a seven-year-old male with dementia who unfortunately was in a car driving around overnight before we were able to get in the database and find the license plate on the car. So you think silver alerts and amber alerts also will be big on this as well. And we haven't really even turned this thing fully on yet. We're just getting started. So lots of, I think, benefit public safety-wise to the community. We've partnered with regional law enforcement departments, Taquilla, Des Moines, Auburn, and others pending. This system will be pretty widespread, and the databases can be networked so that if Des Moines has someone they're looking for that drove towards Kent, they'll be able to look at our system and say, okay, did we find the car? You must be trained, and training has occurred for most of our personnel. I get a special one-on-one tutoring session with Commander Baba tomorrow because even I need to get trained to use it. And so we are full steam ahead. We anticipate finalizing all of the cameras here in the next coming months. We will do a repeat blitz of information to the community, social media and whatnot, so everybody's aware of where they are. Additionally, our policies are getting finalized. Those will be posted on our website. And we will stand up through FLOC. They offer this. We will have a public access portal available that will have some limited information onto the hits, where the cameras are located, some of the data on why queries are being done. So very transparent in that way. And yeah, we're looking very excited about this technology. In our current state of where we're trying to use everything we can to get control of the crime rates, this will be a huge, huge benefit. So I'll pause there. That one might generate questions.
Council President.
Thank you, Chief. Really appreciate it. Just to make sure I understand, so we've got a stolen vehicle. They go through, you're reading license plate. You guys get an alert on your phone, right? And then what's the next step after that again?
So the officers have to use their discretion to determine if the call or thing they're on now is more important than averting for that. So if that occurs, what we've had, so we've had somewhere about half a dozen now recovered stolen's occupied. And what it does is it gives our officers an opportunity to coordinate a response so they can pick and choose where they may contact sometimes, if not always. Instead of just start lighting them up on the road, they can be a little bit more strategic about where they're going to do business. And because we set the parameters of where we're going to stop them, we're starting to see people actually pull over and surrender because, to your point, I think you're trying to say is they can still just drive away from us. We cannot pursue for stolen vehicles. But this gives us a better opportunity to be strategic and be safer about trying to get these vehicles stopped. The worst, I mean, not the worst, but another side benefit is this is going to show us where a lot of stolen cars are being dumped. That will be another product of this as well. So recovering people, stolen property, is still an important thing for us to do, too.
I would imagine also, we have property crime scene that been issued, too. So would that be something that could be picked up as well, too?
Say it again, sir.
Property crime. There's something else.
Yes. Like, we didn't anticipate using this for a hit-and-run vehicle homicide. But we did check the system, and lo and behold, we found the plate. So yeah, all kinds of crimes it can be used for. I think our biggest challenge with this is that we'll probably have more information than we'll be able to keep up with. I think that's what the challenge will be.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is that Q and A page, is that on the FLOC page or is that attached to one of our pages, your page, for instance?
I think it will be linked to our website, but I'm going to look to our resident expert. How will they get to the public-facing portal there, Commander?
We will have a link from the police department's website to the FLOC safety transparency portal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So I will tell you, I am a fan. In a time where police are not allowed to be proactive for a lot of crimes, this is probably the next best thing to being able to help keep our community safe. So grateful for the technology.
All righty. Next up, I do want to talk about some outreach emphasis that we did here recently. As we've chronicled, we've hired. We're at full capacity. It ebbs and flows one or two positions, but we are, for all intensive purposes, caught up with our staffing, and I'm very thankful. One of the deliverables to the community on this is we're going to start backfilling some of our community-based problem-solving units, including our special operations unit there. The picture you see in that slide is two of our officers who are out canvassing with an outreach, Brian. That's Brian from Union Gospel Mission, doing outreach to some of our unhoused community members. And so that's been something that they started. We're able to, as we get staffed up, we now have a sergeant and one about to be two. And as a reminder, we will staff that unit back to sergeant and six, and maybe a little more from there depending on what we can staff. So they've been busy going to camps, doing outreach, doing removals, doing interventions, providing support. Specifically to our downtown core was the focus of this emphasis. They hit a lot of our spots downtown. This came in tandem with the Business Safety Summit that Mayor Ralph held a couple of weeks ago. One of the very clear resounding messages of that meeting was that our businesses, particularly our small businesses, want more support from the city in addressing some of the issues with the open drug use and the unlawful camping. That was very clear. There wasn't a 1A behind their request. That was just the 1. So we are doing what we can there. So the emphasis was on May 3rd. They hit all of the downtown areas, also hot spot areas like 64th and Meeker and 511 South Central. They were able to contact 25 unhoused persons. And we're connecting them with referrals for 13, for primarily housing requests. So they connected directly with Brian, as you see there in that photo. 13 is a lot of people saying at least they're interested in services. That's a lot. So that was a good sign. We don't have data yet, but we're hoping Brian can get us data on how many actually complete the process and get into services. That's the key data that we don't have. We're hoping we will. Additionally, officers did do enforcement action. So a balance of outreach and compassion, and then enforcement when it was necessary. There were several warrant arrests that were discovered, warrants. One was a felony robbery warrant, armed robbery. So got that person in custody. Few lower-level warnings and then warrants, and then a handful of trespass warnings for people that were trespassing. We moved them along, didn't arrest them, but gave them the warnings to get them to another location. So we're going to continue with these. We think they're helpful. As we staff up, we'll be able to kind of move this around. So just kind of staying on top of things. And then, next up is an announcement of our gun buyback event. So we want to make sure everybody's aware that we are hosting a gun buyback event on June 3rd from 10:00 to 2:00. It'll be at our East Hill Police and Fire Training Center. And the way the process work, you've probably seen some of these from other jurisdictions. We are asking people to submit or surrender their unwanted firearms. I think we can all agree that if you don't want to have a gun in your house, it's probably not a good idea to leave it laying around. So we're giving the opportunity to have those dealt with appropriately through the police department in exchange for gift cards. And the gift cards will range in value depending on the type of firearm. And more information, detailed information, can be found at our website. Go onto our police website, hit the Community Education tab, and the Gun Buyback Program will pop right up there. If you are participating in the event, I ask that you read the instructions carefully. There is a lot of detail that I can't go into for sake of brevity on this report. But please go in there. We're looking forward to having that happen. And I want to give special recognition to Councilmember Michelle. She hit me up with this longer than, kind of embarrassed to say, several months ago. And it's taken us this long to kind of pull it together. There were some logistic pieces we really had to work through. You saw what our property room looks like. That was probably the biggest hurdle. But we are doing it in good faith, and I just want to say thank you for making this a priority for us. So we're on it. And with that, and then last, not last, but close to last, illegal street racing. We've had a succession of probably three weekends now where we've had a large presence of street racers in and around the borders of our city, 180th and East Valley. And then on our border with 277th and Auburn. The race in Auburn, unfortunately, a couple of weeks ended up in a double shooting. We had a rentan officer surrounded by the drifters up at the 180th and East Valley location. So I want first to say to the community, we are aware, and we are working to address the ongoing events. The passage of, the legislation's going to help us. But I do want to be clear that that legislation helps us in a reactive mode, right? It helps us do better investigations and prosecution, seizing cars, all of that stuff that will be helpful, hopefully a deterrent. But we still expect that there will be races, and this is race season. As the weather gets better, they're going to come out more and more. And so we're working on that. We have, working with Commander Baba, actually, on, he's going to be a point for our plan. He's a regional expert, as you know. We're leveraging technology, everything from drones to air support from WSP to FLOC cameras coming online. Those will be helpful. Maybe at a future iteration at some point, some of the speed cameras used for deterring racing. But we're going to do everything we can to continue to address the issue. One of the things I don't think I've touched upon in prior presentations that I do want to take a moment is we do have some recommendations for our business community, and these won't sound fair, and they certainly are not inexpensive. But the name of the game with crime prevention is to try and make your property least favorable for crime to be committed. So for our business owners, particularly in the industrial area, you have large parking lots. We are strongly encouraging you to invest in some way to secure the entrances to those parking lots. Because where we see the trends now is not so much the straightaway races, side-by-side. It's the takeover drifting events where they do all their spin and burnouts in parking lots and intersections and things of that nature. So any way that you can secure access to your parking lot, your property, will help make your place less attractive. We are seeing some companies invest in in-person onsite security. That has helped, particularly like at our gas stations and whatnot. They just choose to go somewhere else. And cameras are good, alarms are good, but cameras and alarms that are monitored are better because we want those 911 calls in real time. Some of the complaints we get from our businesses come in on Monday morning, and the events have occurred over the weekend. And that's really, really late in the game. And yes, it may take us some time to get to the 911 calls, but we will do our best to get to them. We will be looking at some of the traditional emphasis as well, and some more to come on that. Bottom line, as it's been for years, my job, my goal is to make Kent a very unattractive place for these dangerous events. And that's what we're going to do. And then, one last thing, and then I'll take questions, Mayor, if there are any. I forgot to say something really important about National Police Week. And that something really important is thank you. As with years, every year, we get a tremendous amount of support from the community and our businesses. If you're on a diet in the police department, this is a really bad time to be on a diet because there's so much food. Not an exaggeration. Wingstop bought 1,000 wings on Monday, 1,000. So I may have had like 15. And lots of companies, Jimmy John's, Sweet Things Bakery. I mean, I have an entire list. We will be pushing out our thank yous on social media here soon. But that was an important part I didn't say earlier is thank you. We feel the love and we appreciate it. That's my report, Mayor. Unless there are questions.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, too, want to thank all the businesses and individuals that are supporting our police this week. It's, I know it's much appreciated. And then there are some thank yous I need to give for the gun buyback program. It was, I didn't have a whole lot of part in it. It was just me pushing to make sure that it happened. And thankfully, the chief was on board, and our CAO, Pat, was on board. So thank you, Pat, and the chief. And also our Police Community Education Unit, Sarah Wood, Stacy Judd, and then Assistant Commander Stansfield, and Commander O'Reilly, and Sergeant Kelso. Thank you for taking on these additional duties. And then to all the officers that have to work overtime on that day. I appreciate you. So also, I know finance was involved. So to everyone who had a part in it, I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I just want to, I know I sent an email to you and the mayor earlier about some of the street racing going on. So I do have video. the mayor earlier about some of the street racing going on. So I do have video. I wasn't able to send those to you, but I want to be able to share them to you with you before you go home today. And then the thing that really concerned me, you know, as a business owner, sometimes they start taking things in their own hand, and the stuff that he was going to do in his own hand really made me a little nervous. So before you leave tonight, I want to share the text message and all the video that I have with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I cannot underscore enough our thank you to Commander Baba. He's sitting right here in my line of sight. So that's who I'm looking at back there. Without the work that he has done in our community, in our region, in our state, we would not have passed the street racing bill. The governor signed it last week. We did make an attempt to get to Olympia for that signing, but things went way faster than we anticipated. So we made it to about Lacey, and then we came back. But it would not have happened if it wasn't for the work that Commander Baba has done in this arena. He is absolutely an expert. And in a time where things are changing and we're seeing much more aggressive racers and all of the different things you heard the chief talk about, the more tools we can have, the better. And my hope is that at least for a certain percentage of the racers out there, that this will really be a deterrent. They, you know, they can lose their car, and that might be enough to stop somebody or make them think twice. Council President and I have talked about the issues that the business owners are facing, and they're very real. So just grateful for the sort of out of the box thinking and the proactiveness. Chief, this is something that you've been talking about for quite a few years now. Councilmember Troutner trying to get it on the state legislative agenda for AWC, didn't make it there, but it was important enough to get passed. So cannot say thank you enough.
How about a nice hand?
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And our prosecutors, I would be remiss in not mentioning the amount of work that our prosecutors are done, have done in in finding creative ways to to prevent this street racing and help and make there be some consequences, right? All right. We are going to move on to reports. So it's a chance for everyone sitting up here on the dais to talk about all of the meetings that they attend outside of regular council and committee meetings. Very, very grateful for our council. They're actively engaged at the regional level, and it really does make a difference when it comes to policy that is being set and funding opportunities. So I'm going to start. First, I would like to recognize Mayor Molinaro, sitting in the second to the front row there. Jan and I served together on a variety of things, Sound Cities Association. He is the current president of Sound Cities Association. So that's the organization of all the cities outside of Seattle that work on policy issues here in King County. Mayor Molinaro, thank you for taking your evening and adding one more council meeting to your agenda. Really grateful. And grateful for your leadership and gaining the perspective of all of the cities, right? I think that's one of the things that goes underestimated is the variety of the differences between cities, even in King County. So thanks for taking the time. All right. Talked a little bit about legislation. So as many of you have been following along, the Blake decision, the legislature did take action today, passed overwhelmingly in both the Senate and the House. The legislation that we have, it's better than the bill that didn't pass. We'll start there. I want to say thank you to Pat Fitzpatrick, our Chief Administrative Officer, and Tammy White, our City Attorney, for spending most of their Saturday repeatedly over what feels like a lot of weeks, weighing in on the proposed legislation, making sure that our legislators understood or at least had a roadmap for legislation when it comes to possession and use of drugs. I feel like as a council, you all stepped out, you took very decisive action, and and that was a roadmap for what what I think all of us believe should have been included in the legislation that that was passed. Some of it's there, some of it's not. Some concerns around things like paraphernalia, that we've been preempted on that. So the council cannot take any action on that, and that basically legalizes it. Which leads me into another part of my report. We had a meeting with downtown business owners last week, packed house at Thai Chili down here. And one of the things we heard repeatedly was the frustration with finding paraphernalia at the doorstep of their businesses. So that's part of why this is such an elevated concern for us. I know that we've all talked to parents that are worried about finding, you know, needles and foil and things like that in parks. And and this, this piece or the the preemption of cities to do anything about that, I think, is one of the more concerning things. So we will do a full analysis of the bill that was passed, and I will make sure to put out more of those details in the coming week. I am grateful for the legislature for taking action. I just frustrated that they had what, and we have heard it repeatedly from cities all around, that the ordinance that Tammy and her team put together was the gold standard for this conversation. So Tammy, I can't thank you enough. Pat, thank you for all of the the phone calls and emails and back and forth as we worked through this. And and it's a start. So I think we can leave it at that. Couple more items. Councilmember Michelle talked about the grand opening for Carson Park. Had a chance last week to have 20 kids from Kent Elementary come down to the park, and they were our test pilots. So there's an augmented reality portion to this park. So I don't, I don't know, but I think every kid, they're born with phones now. They didn't have to have any, they got no, like, this is how you do it. They figured it out. You scan the code, and you can walk through the solar system inside the park or plant the flag on the moon next to the lunar lander. They were the test pilots to provide feedback, let us know, the app developers, that there was any glitches or things that they liked, things that they didn't like. We also had astronaut Dottie. Astronaut Dottie flew on the, I think she said the second or the second or the fourth to last shuttle mission. And so she entertained the kids, answered their questions, and I will tell you, they had some pretty phenomenal questions. It was a very fun day, and our hope is on Saturday, you will get to meet some of those very first test pilots for Carson Park. They are coming back for the event on Saturday. I mentioned the business summit. Also wanted to just highlight, counsel, given the presentation that you had this evening around the funding with the with Green River College, University of Washington, highlight that we are, as a city, meeting with all of our colleges and our school district on a regular basis. Just in the last week, I've met with Superintendent Vella, President Johnson from Green River College. Next week, we'll be meeting with President Harden, making sure that we're coordinating with all of our educational institutions here in the state, and more to come on those meetings. So with that, I am going to turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Pat Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel, I just have one update. You've probably been wondering what's happening with bridges in Auburn. So I want to give you a quick update on that. So we're in the process of finalizing the Boundary Review Board application between the cities, and that should go out very, very soon. And law has been negotiating the inter-local agreement with Auburn. They have some work to do on their end. We'll get it filed. And then we suspect it should be somewhat of an abbreviated situation since it's so simple. So we, I think we have all our ducks in a row. It's just a matter of going through the process now. So we'll keep you posted as that that goes on. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a busy operation in public safety meeting today. Lots of agenda item, but good things. One thing we looked at is the quality consolidating budget, which is something we do every quarter. So some things was already approved by the council, something needed to be approved. So we was able to get through that. We also talked about a letter engagement for the state auditor to come and do some audit. We got some info only on K-HOP, which is the Kent East Hill Operational Center. As you know, the city, we are running out of space. So we're looking for opportunity to give our staff and our employees a chance to be able to move into new locations. So we gave a thumbs up for Julie and Teen to kind of move forward and continue the conversation as we look at the possibility for providing additional space for much needed for our staff and so on. We also, we adopted the, a new city council bylaw for a resolution on committee as a whole, right? We was meeting as a committee, and so we decided to go back to committee as a whole. What we all, as council member, will get to hear everything at one time, whether it's from public safety, whether it's parks, public works. So I believe that's a good thing. So I know our staff is looking forward to that. So I'm pretty excited about us being able to do that. We also have a home repair program for our senior citizen, where we can be providing portable air conditioning to the seniors. So that's really, already we have some hot days already, you know. So I think that's going to be a really good thing because it's definitely going to get warmer as time goes on. We also approve a new jail system for our jail, and that went extremely well. On top of that, I am the Chair of the PIT, Sound Cities Association. So we had our meeting last Wednesday. We set most of our meeting talking about Blake. So we gave everybody an opportunity to kind of talk about Blake. We shared what the Kent ordinance did and some other cities. So and it was a good conversation, but it come to turn out that the state took some action, which is probably better than no action at all. So we also, we, we are still meeting by Zoom. So our April meeting, we decided to meet in person. And boy, that was really a nice feeling to be able to see faces and talk about it. So we, right now, we're planning on doing it every quarter, but hopefully I'd like to get us all back together. This meeting is just so much dialogue.
Better conversation.
Much, much better conversation. So nice seeing everybody as well, too. I have one other thing I want to do before I close my report out, and I'm going to ask everybody to stand. But I do want to say that I have two attorneys that I really love. And my number two attorney have a birthday today. So I want everybody to stand up and accept my number two attorney. We can say happy birthday to him, and that will lead us off. Ready?
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Madam Mayor, that is my report. I'm going to go down to the left. Are you okay, Pat?
Yeah, I'm surprised you weren't called out of order for that, but.
I did talk to my number, my number one attorney told me I could do it, so.
I appreciate it. Thank, thank you very much.
Seriously, happy birthday.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Councilmember Michelle.
All right. Thank you, Council President, and happy birthday, Pat. You didn't mention that on the phone earlier today. All right. I chair the Parks and Human Services Committee, and we had two items. The first was the Kent Senior Center Lunch Program. It was a contract for that. The price of senior lunches is going up by a dollar, but there are opportunities for free and reduce, seniors can apply for free or reduced prices for that. Our second item was an agreement with Earth Corps for Mill Creek Canyon Trail Repair. They are going to continue working on the trail on the southern part, which is the upper part of the trail. So that work will continue this summer. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Councilmember McCord.
Thank you, Council President. I serve on Puget Sound Clean Air Agency Advisory Council, and we had our meeting last week. And we had presentations on greenhouse gas emissions update, and we're still working on our strategic plan update. So I will have more information on that probably after summer, more towards fall. I also serve on King County Domestic Violence Regional Task Force. We are starting to meet in person, but since I was out of town last week, I was unable to attend that meeting. And Growth Management Planning Council, we are meeting tomorrow. So I will have that update as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCord. Councilmember Malamur.
Thank you. I had a similar situation as Councilmember McCord. I serve on the King County Aging and Disabilities Advisory Council, and our last meeting on Friday was actually an in-person, all-day retreat. So it was not a regular meeting with work obligations. I was not able to attend. But those of us that weren't able to attend will get a report next month, and I will bring that forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Malamur. Councilmember Troutner.
Thank you, Council President. I am Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We met on May 8th. We have three items that are on the consent calendar today. The first one is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Second is the ARPA sub-recipient agreement with Business Impact Northwest. And lastly, there's an ARPA grant agreement with Green River College Small Business Center. I am also on the Regional Transit Committee. We will meet tomorrow, so I will report on that next time. And then I sit on the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority Governance Board with Council President Vois and Councilmember Thomas. And for any of you that attended the teddy bear clinic at Station 74 on Saturday, it was really fun. Mayor Ralph was there, lots of kids, lots of families that came to get their teddy bears bandaged, bandaged up. And it was really fun to see all of the great kiddos there. We meet tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutner. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to thank the Fire Department, too. I was also working the teddy bear clinic, and it was a ball of fun. And the really good thing is if you have young kids, it gets them ready for their doctor appointments. So they may not go to a doctor appointment willingly. They may be afraid of what's going to happen. This is an easy way to show them that they will come out just fine. But they have all sorts of family services there. So it was a great day. Not only did they get teddy bears, but there were helmets and there were life jackets. So next year, when it comes around, free day with great access to information. Med, Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee, we are combining our May and June meetings. We'll be meeting on June 12th. So that's a special meeting day for us. We're usually on the fourth Thursday, so this one is moved. King Conservation District, which I chair, we are looking at how we can get the word out more effectively to not only the councils, but to the residents about what happens in their city that involves KCD funds. So we know about the Downey Project. We know that we, our Parks Department may know, Public Works may know, but most of the people in the city, including many of us sitting up here, may not know that the, that King County, or I'm sorry, King Conservation District actually helps fund some of those projects. So we are looking at, you know, keeping our air clean, making sure that our water is clean, trying to cut back on keeping particles out of the air that are going to harm us as well as the wildlife, basically making sure your dirt's good and your water's good. So we want people to know that there's also free services and classes that they can come to, to help in that effort. We have the Public Works Department has the, has the Public Works Committee. This week, we had a talk about the Lake Meridian Water District Boundary Change at our meeting. So we had several, several different items, boundary changes, amendments to some of the easements. To sum it up, thank you for the work that the Public Works Department did on that because it saved us a large bundle of money in the way they did that. So thank you with those boundary changes. Work that we will not have to do, big plus for Kent. And then we also took part in the King County Re-Plus Pledge, which is again going to help keep our, help come up with innovative ways to keep trash out of our landfill. We don't want the landfill full of trash because we're going to have to come up with either using more land, shipping the trash out, other alternatives, so that we can have a place to put trash. And we know there's much better ways to use our land than for trash. So coming up with ways to eliminate some of the trash going in, ways to reuse, completing that circle of reduce, reuse, recycle. The reuse part is very important. So we are now a part of that King County Re-Plus Pledge we have signed on. And the final one is the Arts Commission. On June 7th, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., we're going to have the summer, the summer exhibit. So there's over 60 pieces of art, over 30 artists. Some of those people will be available over across the parking lot Centennial, in the Centennial Building. Come out, take a look at some great art, and enjoy a nice evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam, I forgot to talk about, we also in our workshop talked about the comprehensive plan, which is really going to guide us on where we want to be when we grow up as a city, right? So we had a great presentation today. I know the teams will be going out to the community. This comp plan belongs to all of us, right? So I'm hoping that you find a way to participate and give your thoughts with the team. They've done a lot of lead work in making sure the framework is set up and ready to go. So now we're just going out gathering facts and getting more information. So please, please, please participate. Thank you. Madam, that ends our report. As you can see, everybody's been busy. So.
Appreciate that very, very much. Yeah. And on the comp plan, we'll be finding all kinds of ways to engage the public. They were, in fact, at the teddy bear event at the Fire Training Center over the weekend, asking for folks' input on what they want Kent to be when we grow up. So thank you for that. I'm going to do a quick spoiler alert. So close your ears if you don't want to know. End of first period, T-birds are winning. So there you go.
All righty.
All right. We are going to move on to item number six on our agenda, public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. The first public hearing we have is on our 2024 through 2029 Six Year Transportation Improvement Program. Staff will give a presentation, and I'll invite the public up to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Councilmembers, you may ask questions during the hearing as well. If you're here to testify on this matter or present written statements or evidence, please sign up with the city clerk at the clerk at the front table. Uh, this is separate from our general public comment, uh, time later on in the agenda. So, with that, I will open the public hearing on the 24 through 29 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, and joining us is our transportation planner, David Payne. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council President, Council members. Uh, David Payne, City Transportation Planner, here to present on the, uh, the, uh, staff recommendation for the 2024 to 2029 Transportation Improvement Program, or affectionately known as the TIP. Uh, we're here to request the council to hold a public, uh, public hearing, uh, and also to present the public document that is attached to the backup for today. Um, click. Uh, so, tonight we'll be, uh, reiterating what the schedule for the annual update was. We'll be briefly, uh, uh, going over the outreach and involvement steps that we, that we took, and, uh, we'll be going over highlight, uh, highlights of the projects that are being added to, uh, added to the TIP. A small piece of, uh, homework, though, in the, uh, in the interest of clarity and accuracy, you have handouts before you. Uh, those represent, um, errors and omissions to the maps that were attached to the document. Uh, those have since been updated, but we wanted to make sure that y'all have those in your, uh, in, in, uh, for the record. Uh, just briefly what those were are included. Uh, no new projects or, uh, or deletions to projects were occurring. These are solely to the maps. Uh, there were eight project numbers that were scrambled. Two projects didn't make it onto the maps, so those have been edited, and those are highlighted. It is pink, uh, pink squares on the mapping. So, if you have any questions, um, please do let us know about those. Uh, the, um, and the backup online has, uh, was previously updated. So, just want to be clear about that. Um, so, the, the purpose, again, for, uh, for the annual TIP update is to move projects from the 20-year Transportation Master Plan into the six-year Transportation Improvement Program window. Those are for projects, uh, as we, uh, as we discussed back in, as we briefed back in January, uh, to the, to the full council and workshop, uh, for projects that we have accepted, or that, that council has accepted funding for, uh, and/or, but the, the city is reasonably expected to receive funding for or pursue funding for, for some of our grants, uh, programs, federal and state in particular, over, uh, within the six-year window. Uh, so, the, the schedule on the, on the, on the screen is the, the schedule that we followed. It included, again, the, the briefings and project nominations in January, updating the outreach material in February, uh, that we, we then briefed Public Works Committee before going out for outreach on the proposed project additions and the ones that were and are being completed, even as we speak. I believe that, uh, South 64th was open to traffic, uh, again, just, just this past week. Very exciting. Uh, and then, uh, and then April, we were revising the, the document based on the input and feedback we received. Uh, and here we are in May for, for the public hearing and hopefully a recommendation for adoption. A brief moment, uh, a brief summary of the, the outreach and involvement that, that we, that we went through for the project, projects and the program. Um, again, the, the projects flow from the Transportation Master Plan, adopted in 2021, which had its own, uh, robust, uh, public involvement and, uh, committee, uh, involvement, uh, as well as adoption by, by council. Uh, the, the list on the left is our, our outreach efforts that we went through for this TIP update, uh, and a, a note that any of the bold items, uh, included, uh, public, uh, public elements that had opportunities for public comment, feedback, including, uh, the, the city council, uh, Kent Commons Display, Public Works Committee, a pair of briefings, the Land Use Planning Board, and the Kent Bicycle Advisory Board. Uh, so, with those briefings, outreaches, uh, outreach and nominations, the, uh, the projects recommendations have been incorporated into the draft that is before you, uh, today. And then, uh, briefly, uh, highlights of a couple of the, the projects or the project categories more, uh, more appropriately. These were gone into, into more detail, uh, before the Public Works Committee on May 1st, uh, but in the interest of brevity, I'll, uh, tab through the pages. We have two projects being added, uh, for, for safety, uh, including the Local Roads Safety Plan Update, uh, which we will be, uh, bringing back an element for, for, uh, the, the full committee in a workshop in June, uh, to talk about our Safe Streets and Roads for All Action Plan element, um, that we're, that we're, staff is very much looking forward to, to hosting that conversation over the coming year. Moving on to multimodal connections, uh, three projects, um, representative, uh, across the city. Uh, a pair of projects, including one, uh, recently added by the, the Washington Legislature for crossings, crossing improvements, uh, along interurban trail. Uh, a trio of projects for sidewalk-specific and safe routes to school, uh, im- improvements. And a trio of capacity, uh, improvements across the city. Uh, these are including multimodal, uh, capacity improvements. So, with that, and there's a brief, uh, presentation, but if there are any projects or programs that, uh, that council has specific questions about or interests, or any direction for staff, we're happy to take those at this time.
Council, any questions for David? Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this presentation, David. I know that sidewalks along 132nd are a continued concern, and I do see that there are some projects on here. I'm wondering specifically, and I'm sorry, I looked everywhere for the address and could not find it, but for the new Northeast Hill Community Park. I think maybe it's like 224th-ish, 218th? Okay, 218th is, are there any plans to work on the sidewalks there? Sorry to put you on the spot. I'm getting asked about it, so I have to ask.
Yeah, we are, uh, working with the Parks Department to come up with, uh, crossings in particular of 132nd to try and get the neighborhoods on the west side over to, uh, closer to the park side itself. And so, uh, 214th, 216th, 218th, uh, 223rd, we're looking at all of the cross streets that come up to 132nd. Building sidewalks that whole length along 132nd is gonna be cost prohibitive, but we're hoping that we can just get people, again, from the neighborhoods on the west side, across 132nd over to the park, and then utilize the park to move people north and south. So, you could, would be, um, a different way to get around, but a, a potential way to get around on 132nd. We obviously want to, uh, complete 132nd, but it is a, quite the endeavor.
Thanks so much, Chad.
Thank you, Chad. Uh, thank you, Director. Uh, if I could also give, um, a, a, an advance, uh, plug to the Safe Streets and Roads for All Plan that we'll be updating this summer. It includes, um, an element of sidewalk prioritization, uh, for the entire city, uh, that we, again, will hope to be, um, presenting more information on, uh, to council in June. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I would like to now invite the public to provide, uh, testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Kim, do we have anyone signed up?
We do not.
All right. Any written testimony submitted?
None.
All right. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Sumo.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Council, any discussion or debate? Okay, I am not seeing any. Is there a motion, uh, to adopt a resolution adopting the 24 through 29 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program?
Madam Mayor, I'm looking to adopt Resolution Number 7060, adopting the 2024-2029 Six-Year Transportation Improvement.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you very much.
Just sorry, I wanted to make sure I heard the ordinance number correctly.
Oh, I think it's a...
It was 2...
2060.
Thank you.
Did I?
I thought I heard seven, but I just wanted to make sure.
Got it.
But I'm getting hard of hearing.
Thank you very much. All right. We will move on to the next public hearing this afternoon, or this evening. We have a public hearing, um, amending, public hearing on ordinances amending Chapter 13.01 and 14.01 of the Kent City Code related to the city's building and fire codes. As with the previous public hearing, staff will give a presentation, and I will invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, and other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Council members, you may ask questions during the presentation. If you're here to testify on this matter, there is a sign-up sheet at the table in the front. With that, we will open the public hearing for ordinances amending Chapter 13.01 and 14.01 of the Kent City Code relating to the city's building and fire codes. Would like to ask Fire Marshal John Napier, you are like at the front of the line, perfect, and our building official Steve Wilson to make this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor, Council President, and Council members. Um, uh, as the mayor had spoken, uh, we are here, uh, to present tonight about the 2021 Building Code Adoption. We're gonna provide a little bit of background on what this is about and, uh, some of the things that we've had done locally, and kind of what the next steps as we prepare for the code adoption for the state. First of all, this is a triennial, uh, cycle that we get into every year, so we are currently using the 2018 codes. We're now gonna be adopting the 2021 codes. Um, these codes are published by, uh, three councils, uh, code councils. One is the International Code Council, uh, one's the Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, and the other one is National Fire Protection Association. Um, all of our codes that we adopt and enforce on a daily basis, um, all come from, uh, rulemaking that's done administratively through the State Building Code Council. Um, and that's a, uh, governor-appointed, uh, board that, uh, has, uh, rulemaking authority for the state. And so, all of these codes that we'll be adopting, uh, this year, uh, in July, um, have gone through a very rigorous, uh, technical review process and has included, uh, uh, public testimony from, um, industry and, and from the public. So, when we talk about building codes, uh, it really is a lot more than just the building code. So, uh, we, uh, under RCW, uh, the cities and counties are required to enforce the codes. Um, and the building code, uh, in the state of Washington includes the building code, the residential code, the mechanical codes, the fire codes, the wild and urban interface codes, and the uniform plumbing code. So, when we say building codes, it's really encompassing all the regulations that we have in the built environment that makes our buildings safe. The last, uh, one that we have is the energy code. And so, in addition to the building codes, uh, the state RCW requires that we enforce the Washington State Energy Code. When we adopt the, the state codes, we as cities have the ability to amend the codes. Um, and so, what we try to do is we try to take what the state has adopted and then amend it to make it fit our local conditions, so it works better in our communities. Um, we can do that, but there's a caveat. We can't lessen or diminish those requirements done by the state, right? We just bat on to them and kind of raise the bar, but we never want to lower the bar. Um, we have, and, and we currently maintain, Chapters 1301 and Chapter 1401 of, of Kent City Code includes a list of local amendments that we use for both the fire codes and the building codes to try to make that, that fit within our community. To go over some of the Title 13 fire code changes, a lot of things that we do is, has housekeeping items. You'll notice in there, there's a lot of number changes. Um, the code publishers like to sell books every three years, so they always get a little thicker. They renumber some things, and so, um, a lot of stuff's, uh, housekeeping items. Um, and honestly, we couldn't do all the housekeeping items and changing the numbers around without our legal department. They do an outstanding job checking all that stuff for us, uh, every year. Probably drives them nuts. But, um, but again, a lot of housekeeping items. A lot of administrative provisions have changed, and so, we've, we've modified those. Uh, nothing really, uh, of any substance, um, just some administrative codes to help us administer the codes better within the community. Um, a lot of the requirements you'll see in the fire code are local access requirements. We, we currently merged with, um, Tuck Willa Fire, and so, we're trying to harmonize our codes, uh, across the jurisdiction. Um, they had a lot of good language, uh, that we, that we stole from their codes and kind of merged in, into our code, and, and we're using the same code requirements in all our five jurisdictions that we work in. The other thing that we've done is, uh, we standardize our rapid access key box program. So, what that means is you'll, you'll notice on a lot of businesses, you'll see a box that we have a special key to get into. Uh, we historically have always had manual keys, so we kind of look like janitors running around. We have all these keys to get in these boxes, because we have boxes that are, you know, 25 years old. Um, we're getting up with the new IT stuff and the new technologies, and we're going to a regional electronic key that, uh, those of you that have sold realty, realty or gone to, sold your house, they've got electronic keys to get in your house and all that stuff. So, it's kind of a similar thing. So, we'll have an access key box that, that will be standardized. Uh, it'll have a keyway that allows, um, neighboring departments to come in and mutually aid and help us out. We'll be able to get access to our buildings and vice versa. Um, just want to be transparent, make sure that the council understands that this will be a cost to some businesses. Um, they will have to upgrade their boxes to the current standard. Uh, some of the boxes are 25 years old. They have a very old keyway in them, and it's just time to get to a standardized, um, regional approach to access to buildings and, and properties. And with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Great. And just to keep going on what John said, the IBC and the IRC and the Plumbing and Mechanical Codes is just gonna be mainly housekeeping items that are gonna be updated. Like you said, move things around, delete sections, possibly some words. Nothing more than that typically. I think that's about our presentation. I know mine was short.
All right. Council, any questions? All right. Uh, if there are no questions, Kim, do we have any speakers signed up?
We do not.
Any documents that needed to be admitted to the record?
None.
Councilmember Fincher, you have a question?
Yes. When are the, uh, businesses expected to make these changes?
That's a good question. So, um, if, if it's an existing box that needs to be upgraded, uh, they have a year from when we, from when we make contact with them. So, we've got to figure out each of the boxes kind of has a different path to upgrade. Some boxes just need to be flat-out removed and replaced with a brand-new, uh, box. Some of them, they can change out some of the components in the box. So, we're gonna, on a case-by-case basis, we're gonna evaluate each of the properties, let them know what they need to do, and then the clock starts. So, if it's a retroactive upgrade, it'll, they'll have up to a year to upgrade. Um, you know, when we build new buildings, obviously, they're gonna be putting in the, in the most current technology, right? And then those people that have properties that should have had boxes, they'll have six months to get upgraded. So, but we want to make sure that when they spend their money, they're, they're making the right. They're not just going to a website from the people that are selling things. Uh, we'll let them know exactly what they need to do for their upgrade path, so they don't have to waste any money.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. A motion would be in order to close the public hearing.
Sumo.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The public hearing is now closed. Council, any discussion or debate? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the ordinances amending Chapters 13.01 and 14.01 of the Kent City Code relating to the city's building and fire codes?
Can I make it? Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 4462 and 4463, amending various sections of Chapter 13.01 and 14.01 of the Kent City Code to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Building, Residential Existing Building, Mechanical Engineer, engineer, excuse me, Energy, Property Maintenance and Fire Code, and a Uniform Plumbing Code, together with the city's local amendment to those code, as specified to those ordinance, and to make other housekeeping amendments.
Second.
A long one.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. All right. That ends our public hearing portion of the meeting. Our next item is public comment opportunity for members of the public to, uh, bring any concerns or questions to the council or the mayor, uh, for things relating to the business of the city of Kent. Kim, do we have anyone signed up?
I do. I have Tac Kim, that is gonna speak on the Circle K, and, uh, Jan Molinari has also signed up.
All right. So, um, if our first speaker could come up to the podium, if you could state your name and city of residence for the record. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. There will be an on-screen timer. You can come right up here to the podium. You can come right up here to the podium. And we'll go ahead and get started.
Madam Mayor, City Council President, and esteemed city members, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Tac Kim. I'm the owner of Miko Street Bar and Grill in Miko Street, which is only several blocks away from Ruben Golf Course. To my right is a Circle K gas station, and to my left is the Quality Inn. The reason I'm here is to ask for some help to the city. To begin the story, this morning, I was assisting the detectives of the city of Kent investigating the shooting that happened on Monday morning at 1:30 at the Circle K. What I'd like to share is that this, according to the detectives that I spoke, that the Quality Inn and the Circle K shooting is interrelated. According to the detectives, they do not know what yet, but they are interrelated. So I would like to share this from what I've seen from my business. Last 30 days, I've been seeing Salvation Army and the Urban League of Metropolitan Seattle fans coming in assisting the homeless that's being placed in Quality Inn. From them, I found out that county is giving out vouchers to save the Quality Inn. I feel that there has no processes of how to go about placing homeless people in the city of Kent. I'd like to do my part, being a good neighbor, accommodating these circumstances, but I think there should be a discussion how we go about equitably sharing the responsibility on this issue. That's it. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. We don't generally do question-answer with public comment. Counsel did, I saw a lot of nodding heads. I, what I will tell you is that we also would like there to be a conversation, because a lot of these things we find out about after the fact. So, thank you for your willingness to also work with our detectives. We're very, very grateful for that.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, Mayor Molinaro.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. First off, I am Jan Molinaro, Mayor of Enhamclaw, but I'm here tonight as your Sound Cities President. And before I talk to you a little bit about my presence here on three items I want to address on Sound Cities, I want to thank Mayor Ralph for that earlier introduction. And I also want to thank her, as a past president of SCA, the hard work she put into it. I was there at the very beginning of my stature on the organization, and I was able to observe you work hard and get the organization to where it's at. So I really follow and emulate you, Dana, and it's very, very positive feedback that I can get from you. I want to thank you. And I do want to do a shameless plug. Councilmember President, you forgot a very important event. July 13th through the 16th, we have the King County Fair down in Enhamclaw that you are all invited to attend.
Let me scare for a moment.
No, you did well, Bill, but I do want to invite everybody down because it is King County Fair, so I want to thank that. But again, I'm here tonight to talk to you about SCA, and I know this is really not a whole lot that I can say because your council is so active in Sound Cities. But I do want to thank you, as the city of Kent, for being one of 38 cities as a partner with us at SCA. I think it's very important that that partnership grows. It's a valued partnership, and as being a member, you do have a voice in the region through SCA. Secondly, we do have a SCA networking event coming up on Wednesday, May 31st, in Renton, the usual spot at the pavilion. If you've never been there, I encourage you to please attend. They're really worthwhile. This one in May is gonna be a legislative wrap-up. We're inviting some senators and representatives from Olympia to attend to give us their perspective on what occurred. Also, these events, obviously, you not only learn from the speakers, but you do have that opportunity to network, not only with fellow electeds, but as well as with our valued business partners that are a big part of Sound Cities. So again, look at that. If you didn't receive an email, go to SCA website, and you'll be able to get the information there and register. And again, talking about the regional boards and commissions. I didn't know this, but we, SCA does have the capability to appoint to 27 different boards through the King County area. And doing a quick read-through, I did a printout, Kent is very well represented, and I applaud the council and the mayor for being so involved for not only the region, because that is really a voice that you are providing, but also for your city. I think that is so important. And the last thing is, thank you very much for the time. I appreciate the meeting every time. I've done this for a few other cities, and I learned something to take back to my own council meetings. Thank you. And it's pretty difficult to be under that three minutes on the other side of it. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I think that that's a really perfect way to end that, too, that every time that we work together with our surrounding cities, I think we all learn something that we can take away that make not only the region better, but our cities better. So thank you very much for that. And the Piallet Fair, it's on the calendar, everybody, or the Enhamclaw Fair. Like I said, the wrong city. I should have stopped talking when I was ahead. Oh, it's been a long day. I'm just gonna leave it at that. How about that? All right, Kim, do we have anybody else signed up for public comment?
We do not.
All right, thank you. So that brings an end to our public comment. Item number eight on our agenda is the consent calendar. This is a compilation of items that the council has reviewed, discussed, and voted on in committee, and it's passed out of committee. These items are passed out of committee without controversy. We have items A through J. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Sumo.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar passes. That brings us down to the next few items on the agenda. Other business, we do not have any this evening. We do not have any bids, nor do we have an executive session. So with one additional spoiler alert, we are still ahead, and we're in the end of the second period. Just gonna say, leave that right there for you. With that, we are adjourned.